Okay, thank you. My call meeting to order, that's a little bit behind. It's six o'clock, straight up and down on my watch. So, Ms. Whitby, call the rule, please.
Ross, here. Taylor?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris? Ginn? Here. Height?
Present.
A four is present.
Thank you very much. I invite you to rise for the prayer and pledge to be led by Councilmember Height.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for being in attendance tonight, watch over and guide us in all this city council and all they do, and be with us and give us the wisdom to carry out great things for this city. Lord, we thank you for all the many blessings that you've bestowed on this city, and we pray that you'll be with all of the uniformed personnel, military, non-military, that are out there on duty tonight, caring for us and protecting us and serving us. And we just pray that you'll be with them and watch over and guide and protect them. Lord, we pray that all that we do in the coming days, weeks, months, will be pleasing in your sight. And, Lord, before I end this prayer, I'd like you to just remember the family of our friend and former mayor of this city, Eddie Powell, and his services this weekend. In Jesus Christ's name I do pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So moved.
Back it.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Communications, anybody want to pull one through five, any of them?
Number seven.
Number seven, what is it? All right, I've only got five on my sheet, so... All right, one through seven, anybody want to pull any?
Number seven.
All right, let's pull number seven. How about a motion to accept one through six?
Move accept and file.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn? Yes. Height?
Yes.
All right, number seven, how do you want that?
In its entirety, please.
I'm sorry.
Read it in its entirety.
Okay. Nathan Hamilton, communications director, letter to Mayor Smith regarding resignation as communications director. Mayor, it is my honor to serve the mayor of North Little Rock and has been every day since I was first given the opportunity nearly 10 years ago. The support you provide and the sense of pride I have for our city because of the great things your administration is accomplishing makes this the best job I've ever had. There have been incredible days and tough days, but it is no exaggeration to say I learned more about management from you in a month than any school or business courses could ever offer in a year. I am beyond grateful for the knowledge I have gained having spent a decade working with you and your team. You and Missy both have been great friends and mentors to Stacy and I, and while grateful for the friendship you have shown us to date, our family looks forward to many years of the same. It has been a busy year for the Hamilton family with a new family business, my preparation for the bar exam, and ever diminishing time with each other. I am to succeed, if I am to succeed in these areas or arenas, I must concede that they require more time than I am able to devote while working for the city. Something has to give, and I will not allow my work for the city to be second rate. With this letter offered my resignation as communications director for the city of North Little Rock, if you accept, I continue to serve at your pleasure for the next month until October 18th, 2019. Be assured that I will do my best to help you make a transition to another communications director. Also, I remain dedicated to North Little Rock and your goals, so if you have any need, if you have need of my abilities, please feel free to call upon me even after my departure date. North Little Rock is my hometown, and though new business opportunities, family and educational pursuits call me away at this time, I am confident future avenues will arise to serve the residents of this great city. With tremendous gratitude, Nathan Hamilton, City of North Little Rock Communications Director.
Move to accept and file.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Needless to say, I know I'm going to miss Nathan terribly, but he's got some great opportunities in front of him, and like I tell everybody on staff at Family First, and he felt like this was best for his family, so we will all miss him. He's done a great job for us the last 10 years, but he's not going to be far away if we need him. So, great job, Nathan, to you, and give our love to Stacy. Okay, let's go ahead and do the special call.
Oh 19-177, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Honorable members of the North Little Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Little Rock City Council at 6:05 PM on Monday, September 23rd, 2019, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. R 19-177, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a disaster recovery administrative services contract with Witt Global Partners, sponsor Mayor Joe A. Smith. Pursuant to North Little Rock Ordinance Number 9079, you are entitled to 72 hours electronic notice of this meeting. Please acknowledge receipt of this email as soon as possible. We're applying to the same.
Moved to accept and file. And do we need to amend this into the legislation, or?
We can either amend it or do it as a scrivener's error, or in the legislation, it says that the contract will be substantially similar to, so whatever your pleasure is.
Your pleasure, Ms. Ross.
I'd like to go ahead and just amend this in.
Okay, amend in the price sheets. We've got a motion to amend, is there a second? All those, oops, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Okay. Now, do we need a motion to adopt this amended?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I am going to step out of order, if with no objections, and call Oh 19-108. Oh 19-108, it's on Electric Company, and our director has got some pressing family issues he needs to deal with, so without objection, we please call Oh 19-108.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements and authorizing payment to Green Jacket Incorporated for the purchase of electric substation insulators for the Galloway Substation, first reading.
Move suspend the readings.
Second. A motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I am going to step out of order, if with no objections, and call Oh 19-108. Oh 19-108, it's on Electric Company, and our director has got some pressing family issues he needs to deal with, so without objection, we please call Oh 19-108.
An ordinance certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 412 West 20th Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, amount $4,171.56.
How about a motion?
Move.
Call a public hearing. Anybody here to speak on the next three condemnations? 805 West 44th, 4210 Volcom Pike, and 112 Sunset Lane? Anybody here to speak on those? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Okay, 173, please.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 805 West 44th Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Needless to say, I know I'm going to miss Nathan terribly, but he's got some great opportunities in front of him, and like I tell everybody on staff at Family First, and he felt like this was best for his family, so we will all miss him. He's done a great job for us the last 10 years, but he's not going to be far away if we need him. So, great job, Nathan, to you, and give our love to Stacy. Okay, let's go ahead and do the special call.
Oh 19-177, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Honorable members of the North Little Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Little Rock City Council at 6:05 PM on Monday, September 23rd, 2019, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. R 19-177, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a disaster recovery administrative services contract with Witt Global Partners, sponsor Mayor Joe A. Smith. Pursuant to North Little Rock Ordinance Number 9079, you are entitled to 72 hours electronic notice of this meeting. Please acknowledge receipt of this email as soon as possible. We're applying to the same.
Moved to accept and file. And do we need to amend this into the legislation, or?
We can either amend it or do it as a scrivener's error, or in the legislation, it says that the contract will be substantially similar to, so whatever your pleasure is.
Your pleasure, Ms. Ross.
I'd like to go ahead and just amend this in.
Okay, amend in the price sheets. We've got a motion to amend, is there a second? All those, oops, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Okay. Now, do we need a motion to adopt this amended?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I am going to step out of order, if with no objections, and call Oh 19-108. Oh 19-108, it's on Electric Company, and our director has got some pressing family issues he needs to deal with, so without objection, we please call Oh 19-108.
An ordinance granting a waiver of residential pipe stem lot restrictions of Section 13.6 of the subdivision ordinance for certain real property located east of Mine Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency. First reading.
Move suspend all readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Okay, we do have one public comment on legislation. Brian Vine wants to talk about 9, 10, 11, and 12. Is Brian here? Are you here just to answer questions, or?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, just stand down, and if we have any questions, we'll call you up. Okay? Okay, consent agenda, anybody want to pull anything off of that? Seeing none, how about a motion?
I do, if Mr. Marita is here, R 19-168. I mean, 168, yes, 168.
That's a counselor question. The rehab on property 15 to 21, they brought a bond and the whole bit.
All right, I just want to make sure that, is he here tonight? I think that he was supposed to be here tonight.
Jermaine Marita?
Yeah.
Yeah, come to the microphone, would you? Please, sir.
Since you had to come tonight, I thought I'd ask you a question. So, you're okay with everything on the rehab agreement, and you've got the timeline, all schedule of when everything's supposed to be completed? You understand the timeline?
Yes, ma'am.
You do? Okay, that's all, I just want to make sure that everything you were in agreement on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jermaine.
Do you still want that pulled, separate?
Not pulled.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you very much. One alarming thing on there, as you can see, we're needing another half a million dollars on flood damage, so I'm hoping that's the last one. Okay, new business.
R 19-172, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 412 West 20th Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, amount $4,171.56.
How about a motion?
So moved.
Call a public hearing. Anybody here to speak on 412 West 20th, on cleanup liens? 412 West 20th, seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R 19-173?
Okay, hold it right there for me. I'm going to call a public hearing. Is anybody here to speak on the next three condemnations? 805 West 44th, 4210 Volcom Pike, and 112 Sunset Lane? Anybody here to speak on those? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Okay, 173, please.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 805 West 44th Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R 19-174, Mayor Smith?
I'm going to hold that one for one meeting.
R 19-175, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 112 Sunset Lane in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Talk to me.
So moved.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R 19-176?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Second. Call a public hearing. Anybody here to speak on any of the liens that are certified, liens on certain real property regarding grass cutting and abatement? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R 19-104, Mayor Smith?
I'm going to hold that one for one meeting.
R 19-175, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 112 Sunset Lane in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Talk to me.
So moved.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R 19-176?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Second. Call a public hearing. Anybody here to speak on any of the liens that are certified, liens on certain real property regarding grass cutting and abatement? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh 19-111?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver of Section 5.9 of the zoning ordinance and Section 11.5 of subdivision ordinance which prohibit pipe stem lots in commercial zones for certain real property located east of Mine Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency. First reading.
Move suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion, suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Ross.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, this is with Mr. Spencer, that the fire marshal rigged on this one also.
Okay, on the motion.
He has on this one, this one too, okay.
So, this is a commercial lot, so it's not allowed at all for commercial lots, but applicants here, he has stated that he's just going to do an office for himself on this property.
Is that correct? Yeah, and so it'll be very, no traffic, customer traffic coming to it, so we were all okay with that, as long as that's all that was going to happen on that property.
Okay, well, that cause any problems in the future when it's no longer, it's already rezoned now?
It's at the end of the street, the streets are just dead ends right there, so...
Dead end, street.
There wouldn't be much activity, it'd be a far way to go to get to this property, so I doubt anybody would ever want to do something that far back out, out into the country there.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency?
Ross? Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R-19-112? I'm sorry, oh, 19-112.
Call it.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver of the sidewalk requirements of Section 12.21 of the zoning ordinance and Section 9.11 of the subdivision ordinance for certain real property located east of Mine Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency, first reading.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency?
Ross? Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh, 19-113? Councilmember Height, again?
What does that mean?
Please call it.
An ordinance approving to request to waive requirements of the master street plan